We're going to sell commercial signs on this. It's a good opportunity to get sell some commercials.
Okay, we're all.
Okay, all right. We have, I'll call the meeting to order, April 3rd, Salina City Planning Commission. We have a quorum. We'll begin with item number one, the approval of the summary minutes of March 20th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Our first public hearing item, item number two. Apparently, the applicant could not make it because of an emergency at home. Is there a motion to postpone this to the next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we postpone application CU 12-2 to the next meeting.
There a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will postpone the item. Item number three, application Z 12-1 filed by the Salina Planning Commission. Dean, do you have a staff reporter review for this?
You already dealt with this at your last meeting and we advised you at that meeting that we had a quorum that was sufficient to operate and it is in most circumstances, but we went back and looked at what the statute requires in terms of affirmative votes to move it on to the city commission with a positive recommendation and the requirement is that there needs to be a majority of the membership of the commission in favor of the motion, not just a majority of those present and voting. And so, we did have a majority of those present and voting, but we brought it back to see if there were five affirmative votes in favor of this text amendment. And John, if you could put that up on the screen, please. In addition to that, we would attempt to get some guidance on more additional matter, but the text amendment that was presented at that meeting had these items and the primary things of note is that if you had a approved conditional use permit and a pole sign was approved as part of that, or if you had a property located on a collector arterial street, a pole sign would be permitted. And then down there at, now, this is not the one, John, it's the Division Two, the district regulations. Okay, so, one of the changes is to allow for the installation of a pole sign. And then, if you could keep going, John. What was talked about is here, if you were a school or a public facility like a neighborhood center or something like that, you could have a 32-square-foot sign. If you were located on a arterial or collector street, that could be increased to 64-square feet. So, the example we gave is if you are a Coronado School and you're on a residential street, you'd be limited to a 32-square-foot sign. If you were Central High School and you wished to have a bulletin board sign at the corner of Front and Crawford, it could be a 64-square-foot sign. And then, that could be illuminated, it could be an electronic changeable copy sign. And then, there was an added provision here to allow athletic stadiums and public arenas to have a sign up to 100-square-feet in size. And if you could go to the next page. So, this deals, the other change we made is that the consensus of the commission was that there should just be a standardized 10-foot setback. There was some discussion about possibility of having a greater setback for pole signs, but the commission believed that 10 feet was adequate. And then, this language here would apply the 50% on whether you had a 32 or 64-square-foot If you were located on an arterial street or had an athletic stadium or public arena, then the height of the sign could be 20 feet. And so, these things are pretty standard with what's already in place for elementary schools. The main changes were to allow for the 20-foot sign height for pole signs or for properties located on an arterial or collector street. So then, if you could go to the other one, John, and this is where, could use some help. The, need to scroll down. Basically, the consensus of the commission was that 15 minutes per hour was too limiting and it ought to be 30 minutes per hour. Where we need some clarification is which of those signs, I think when we were thinking of it, we were thinking of it in terms of signs at public arenas or athletic stadiums. We weren't thinking of it in terms of signs at elementary schools or the smaller type signs in terms of the off-premise advertising or commercial business messages. So, we would want some clarification from you as far as what we thought we were proposing and what you thought you were recommending. Or, our thought was that if you had a large message sign at Salina Stadium or Salina Bicentennial Center or Dean Evans Stadium, that those signs could contain the off-premise advertising, but it wasn't the thought that that would include Coronado School or Oakdale School or a community center where every conceivable public sign that you had in the city would have off-premise advertising on it. So, we need some guidance and clarification from you as to finalize that where, if this is 30 minutes per hour, where those are permitted or if you think they should be permitted at every electronic changeable copy sign location. So, the reason this is brought back is primarily because to move it on to the city commission, we need five affirmative votes recommending its passage, but we also wanted to make sure we were on the same page with you about the off-premise commercial business messages. Because the idea was that if you had the sign at Salina Stadium or sign at Dean Evans Stadium, that the same rules that would apply at the Bicentennial Center would apply. But if you think Friendship Center or Oakdale Elementary School should have the same off-premise ability to advertise, then we would need to clarify that.
Well, I guess I'm for whatever deal we can craft here and I guess it is an option to postpone it until we have a fuller number of commissioners here. But, in my opinion, these are public sector signs or the under the P classification. I was comfortable with school board and all of these entities judging for themselves what 50%, what the 50% level was appropriate. But, I know there's other commissioners that don't feel that way, so.
Can I throw?
Maybe it would be appropriate for just the bigger venues and to rewrite it to exclude or make smaller the time for the grade schools.
Well, that was, but I mean, it's certainly free for you to decide. That's, in our minds, when we were crafting it, that's what we were doing, but we didn't do a very good job of clarifying that because we were basically taking this, which was kind of set up for those larger, what we called, community event-type message signs and bringing it down to the neighborhood-type scale. I mean, the things that are going on at the Bicentennial Center or the stadiums are maybe have more community-wide draw, whereas what's happening at the elementary schools is what's specifically going on there. But if the idea is that to support the cost of the sign or for other reasons, that the public entities ought to be able to have that off-premise messaging, then that, then you probably want to go there. The only thing that you want to think about is if you're talking about, and it would probably get into other conflicts, but, you know, there are churches, there are not-for-profit entities, there are nursing homes, there's other places that might be able to have a changeable copy sign and you just have to figure out how far you want to go with that because we have some commercial districts in Salina where you can't have an off-premise sign or messages.
Let me throw one more aspect of this out there. First of all, I think from an enforcement standpoint, if we put a, if we enumerate that you can only use it 50% of the time, I mean, who's going to police that? And it gets to be kind of a muddy thing. The second thing is, is that I thoroughly envision the schools, let's say Oakdale, for example, let's use that as an example, using blocks of time in a very specific manner. The programming is such on those signs that you have a timetable like this and you build messages and you plug them into this timetable. And you'd say, maybe we want to run benefit soup supper or something like that for elementary kids from 7:00 to 7:15 and we're going to put that in conjunction with some other messages. Well, the whole time from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock, you might have nothing but public messages. And then, say from, say, 9:00 to 10:00 or from 4:00 to 5:00, you might have some public advertising. I guess what I'm trying to say is, the whole benefit of these machines is that you're able to target market who you want and get your message across to the people that you want. Obviously, the school is concerned about getting their message across to the people that are picking up and dropping off kids, the parents. And, so, I think that to, you know, limit that stuff becomes kind of cumbersome from an enforcement standpoint and also from a marketing standpoint because certainly that capability is in all the software as far as I know, at least the ones we sell it is.
And, one thing that gets muddy is once you do open a door, then getting into regulating content of what's on. You know, we can regulate the time, the place, and the manner in which the information is displayed, but then, once you start getting into the content of what is displayed, that becomes, you have to have stronger justification for that. So, you know, what we're proposing is basically going from no off-premise advertising to possibly just saying that it doesn't matter whether it's on-premise or off-premise advertising. And there's no right or wrong answer to that. We just wanted to make sure that we captured what you thought we were talking about when we were talking about commercial business messages. Because the advanced justification for allowing the electronic changeable copy signs in residential areas at institutions, whether they're city or school district or whatever, is to provide public information, community information to parents, teachers, neighbors, those type of things. The advertising is supposed to be secondary to the principal justification of, we need these types of signs to convey messages to the public or to our constituents or to our parents and the advertising is there to supplement or support that. But it's, the reason for the 50% or the 25% or whatever is to ensure that the principal use and justification for having the sign there is to convey information to the public, not to advertise.
Patrick, are you then saying the 15 minutes per hour is not correct because there may be one hour that while they're dropping kids off between school, there would be no commercial advertising, but then, the next hour may allocate 45 minutes? I mean, so is it within a?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
So, would it be then, so much in a 24-hour, I mean, again, who's really going to police this? I don't know. But in case, I think you have to set some sort of parameters just to give them a guideline that there is a law out there. Now, if somebody wants to go out and watch it for an hour and really do that, then that's their prerogative, but it could cut down.
I think that's a good point, Todd. And frankly, the digital billboards that you see on the highways, on the interstates, those all have capability of capturing the number of times that a message ran in a 24-hour period because that's how they bill this stuff out. And it's all, it's all electronic, it's logged into the software of the machine. And so, I would think something like in a 24-hour period would be a lot more apropos than.
Well, but that doesn't, in this particular instance, it doesn't come into play because, again, they're only supposed to be able to turn on from 7:00 to 10:00.
Right.
So, we would have to figure out what is the compromise between how many hours is it on there? And which brings up my second question, since you sell these. Does it hurt the sign at all or is it able to be put on a timer and that's no problem to click off at 7:00 and back on at 10:00 and back on at 7:00?
The LEDs in the power supplies are such that you can turn that thing on 10 times a second and it has no effect, effective wear on it or it doesn't, there's no detriment to doing that or being completely off or completely on.
So, there's no, we're not going to run into problems, somebody buys a sign and they say, "Look, we can't shut this, the sign is supposed to be from the manufacturer warranty on 24 hours, we're not supposed to shut it off."
No. Because if you're rolling a message, let's just say you're rolling a message across there and it says, "Todd Welsh, best realty deals in town," for example, it rolls across there. Okay. As that message is rolling across, those pixels are lighting up, they're turning on and off as it goes on there. So, you might have a probability of having that thing, each pixel being off at least half of the time that that message is rolling across there. So, yeah, it does not affect the wear, but, and LED, the only thing that we have in terms of a quantification is that an LED has a half-life of 100,000 hours. So, it will lose half of its brightness in 100,000 hours or about 10 years. That's if it was left on all the time at full brightness. And most of these signs operate at about 20% to 30% brightness capability and they're certainly not, every pixel is certainly not on all the time.
And not to be a wag about this, but which pixel are you going to measure for the 15-minute or 30-minute per hour?
I'd say it'd be the.
Could be the one up here in the corner or the one in the center?
I'd say it would be the whole message, that would be my take on it.
I think the idea is that you wouldn't necessarily measure it hour per hour, but you would, you would look at the window from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and that's the way that you would measure it in total. And there may be a way to say, you know, per hour of operation in a 24-hour period or something like that, that it's not, it's not to break it down into hour-by-hour segments, but to just look at the total period that it's on in a day. And if it's on and all it does that entire day is advertise McDonald's or Burger King, then it's not meeting the intent of being in on a public use.
The entities that we've sold these to that are quasi-public, I'll use the Rubbery Club in Concordia, for example, they get a lot of requests every month. Can you put our message on our sign? Some of them are for car washes, for the cheerleaders, some are for soup suppers that benefit some club that isn't necessarily school-related. Some of them are from businesses. The biggest burden's going to probably be on the school district to affect some kind of policy and some kind of timeframe that those go into. I think our goal is, like Dean said, maybe to hit the intent of it with some kind of quantification that covers a period that they're on and try to stay out of the enforcement deal.
You know, I might say, and I cannot speak for the other educational institutions, nor can I speak for the city of Salina, but I can speak for 305. First of all, I think we're trying, we're entering a new world here with this on public facilities. We might want to walk before we run a little bit and I certainly would be agreeable from our perspective if it could be crafted properly to not allow any advertisement on elementary schools and residential districts. And only those schools that are on arterial streets, that would be Central and South, basically, because we don't have any property on, for Lakewood on Ohio, only those schools that are on arterial streets would be allowed to have commercial advertisement on the signs. That would be a starting point for us and that would work well. And then, I think managing the time is going to be, the board's going to have to wrangle with that anyway. It's going to be a difficult decision how they manage that. Maybe we do what John's suggesting and call them commercial signs on those two sites and possibly could be included at Westland, or at, yeah, Kansas Westland and Sacred Heart since they could be included and possibly St. John's. Just call them commercial signs, it'll be similar to what else is up and down those streets and then we manage it how we need to at the institution. Would that be a mitigation?
I second that.
Yeah.
I think it all comes down to the elementary schools and I'm concerned a lot about traffic flow. You get to an elementary school and you, you're driving 20 mile per hour, there's cars on both sides of the street a lot of times, there's kids walking back and forth between cars and you've got a sign that somebody's looking at. I'm concerned a little bit about that. I'm concerned about that commercial sign, you know, see what's on it next. If it's, if it's public use information, people are going to see it once and they're going to know it and they'll look up every once in a while. I don't think it'll be as much as a commercial sign would be on, I think it's a great, great opportunity for the school district or anybody else to generate income, plus they have to pay for the sign. But I think there's certain places for it to be and I don't know if the elementary schools are the place to be.
But we would still, and what I'm trying to say is, we'd still have the changeable copy sign to elementarys.
I agree.
But they would be limited only to school messages.
Public use, actual public use, no commercials.
Which would help us a lot in those areas because that changeable copy that we have now where you have to go out and put the letters on, you know, you might be able to drive around now and see some that say, "Open house in February." I'm not sure, they don't always get changed like they should. So, that's what I would suggest and then if it works well, we don't have problems with it and it's successful, one could always come back and revisit the recommendation later and.
The way that we would address that is basically what you're describing is that any location where you would be eligible to put up a pole sign, which would be at Central High, South High, at a stadium, or at the Bicentennial Center, then you could have the off-premise advertising. Any location where you could not have a pole sign, which would include South Middle, Lakewood, Friendship Center, places like that, then you would not be able to have off-premise messages, off-premise advertising.
Works for me.
Absolutely.
And then, the only question is whether you like the, and we could craft it so it's, we're going to use the term average of 30 minutes per hour during the operating day. I mean, it's not broken down hour by hour, but that you don't exceed 50% of the time during the operating time of the sign in a 24-hour cycle. Because you, no, it's going to be done on a complaint basis anyway and maybe you can answer Dustin's, his question was, well, can't we go to the facility or whatever and ask them to give us a copy of their script that they've scripted for the messages that day? If everything in the script is commercial and there's no messages in their script for the general public, is that the way that you document that or what's the best way to document that?
You could. It's certainly the signs that we sell, that could be done. You could, you could ask for them to give you a printout of the communication message timeline that was going to go to the sign that day and that could be done. But the messages would, it would show, it wouldn't show you the message, it would be generic names for things. So, you could, you can call them whatever you want, but.
If it's an arterial street, why don't we just call it a commercial sign and just say you can put whatever commercials you want on it? The school district, for example, is going to be using it for public use because they need that. But, you know, I don't, I don't think it matters on a arterial street where there's a pole sign if you have commercials because those signs are all up and down those streets anyway.
And John brings a good point. The owner of the sign is still going to be the school district.
And we're going to differ a little from, say, the Bicentennial Center. There's times when the Bicentennial Center doesn't have events and they need the opportunity to just submit some commercial messages. We'll have more events that we're trying to.
So, your thought is if you're limiting the locations where it be, don't worry about the time or duration, just say off-premise advertising is allowed.
What?
Oh, so we can have a transparent meeting? I'll get closer. That would, that'd be great for us and then we can deal with, each of the institutions can deal with how they're going to manage that messaging.
So, does staff have enough input there?
Yeah, what I'm hearing is that we would revise this to limit the signs permitted to have off-premise commercial business messages to those locations where the use is eligible for a pole sign and which would fit into the 64-square-feet and the.
Can I clarify one small thing, Dean?
Yes.
That wouldn't necessarily mean, though, that specifically you would have to put that sign on a pole.
No, it could be a ground sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
The example we gave was that at the, say, Central High, the question was, could you put a ground sign that had a 64-square-foot message area at the corner of Front and Crawford for Central High? Yes. Could you then put a separate sign in front of the tennis courts for Salina Stadium on Crawford? The answer is yes. The one sign for Central High is limited to 64-square-feet, half of which could be electronic changeable copy. The other sign for the stadium could be up to 100-square-feet. The pole sign for the stadium could be 20 feet tall, the sign for Central High might be eight feet tall. Both could have the off-premise advertising because they're on an arterial street. They would be, the Central High is eligible for that because it's located on an arterial street.
Does that work for Sacred Heart or any other private?
Cloud Street is an arterial street and we, I think what this does is it then becomes the model to replicate. The property owned by Kansas Westline is in a university district, St. John's Military School's in a university district. I think what you do is go take what we've worked out here and it could be replicated for the university district or for K-State Salina, which is a university district and it could apply and just becomes the model for that. So that if at Martin Stadium on the north side of Cloud, they wanted to have the same type of sign, they could. But we'd, we'd have to work with Kansas Westline or somebody to get the university district to have similar language.
So, there could be a case at Central, if they put two signs up, one out on Crawford, arterial street.
Mm-hmm.
What's, I've never have found the front of Central, but.
Front Street. Front Street. Front and Crawford.
If they put one at what they call the front of Central, I'm assuming that was supposed to be the front on Front Street.
Isn't that?
They put a sign there, those signs would actually fall under two different categories. One would have to shut off at 10:00 o'clock and would have certain parameters of commercials and the one up front could run forever and have commercials all the time. Is that correct?
No, they would both have to shut off at 10:00 p.m., but we would not care whether they, based on this, we don't care whether they're running commercial business messages all the time or not.
Well, I don't, that doesn't make sense to me then because that is, that is an arterial street and it's in a neighborhood.
Dean, if it was on Front Street, it wouldn't, if it was on Front Street, it would fall in the elementary guidelines, wouldn't it? Because it's.
Front's not arterial, arterial street.
Right, but if it were at the corner.
Corner of Cloud and front, then it would be.
We would consider it to be.
Right.
I'm saying down further in the circle driveway.
Down there by the auditorium entrance.
Yeah, you'd be limited to 32.
You'd be limited to 32.
You'd be limited to 32-square-feet.
And then, tell me why we're shutting off arterial signs at 10:00 at night?
Because these are public uses and not commercial uses.
So, you don't think somebody who works night, who's coming home from Tony's at 11:00 needs to know what's going on at their kid's school?
Well, if you think there should be no time limit if it's on an arterial street, then that, that could be modified. The idea behind the time limit is that we have many of these that are, we're focusing on the Crawford example, but for example, on Magnolia Road. That is an arterial street. There is no commercial development of any kind on Magnolia Road. All you have across the street is homes. If you, the idea behind shutting it off at 10:00 is that the north side of Magnolia is lined with, it's, it's hard to say, well, if on Crawford, it's okay, but on Magnolia, it's not. It's easier just to have to say 10:00. to have to say 10 o'clock across the board. If I lived across the street on Magnolia, I don't think I'd wanna have that sign flashing all night, because that, it's an arterial street, but that is not a commercial area. With, Central High's easy because you have Elmore Center across the street, but not all of these situations are created equal.
I like shutting, I don't have a problem with shutting them off at 10. I think most of our parents would get our message when they, the normal delivery and pickup time of children and.
Saves energy, too.
Yeah, and save, and, yeah, it would save some energy as well. I'd be fine with that to start, at least. And if we find it, it doesn't work, we can always come back and ask for modification to it.
FYI, these don't use a lot of energy. A hundred bucks a year will power one. It's not.
Not too bad, then, huh?
No, no. It's, your computer uses more that runs the sign than the actual sign.
That's, that's good to know, really.
Other comments from the commission?
Do you need anything else from Dean? Do you need to redraft this?
And I'm gonna turn more to you to pay for.
Bring it.
Well, the modifications that I have is that we've, the whole idea of the 15 minutes, 30 minutes per hour is off the table. It may be used for off-premise commercial business messages, period, and it's only gonna be on those locations where you could otherwise have, that would be eligible to have a pole sign. So that, that's going to basically limit it to the schools that are located on an arterial street or city facilities on an arterial street. So, Salina Municipal Golf Course is on Crawford. It's an arterial street. They could have that type of sign up to 64 square feet, and they can advertise off-premise messages. They just have to shut off at 10:00 PM.
And the Bicentennial Center?
Bicentennial Center would need to shut off at 10:00 PM unless there's an event going on that's, that's going past that.
My concern for that, though, are there any contracts already in place that say that needs to be rotating 24 hours a day? And how do they abide with those?
Well, we'll find that out when we, when we send this over to the consultants. But the idea is we're trying to treat people equally. So, we wanna have a level playing field for all the public entities. So, I guess we'd be looking, would probably be item on page three of your report, it'd probably be item, or option two there, to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment with the modifications that you have outlined to staff about the commercial business messages. So, if, if someone wanted to put a motion on the table to recommend approval of the text amendment with the modifications that we have just been outlined with staff, that would be, if we get five affirmative votes for that, we would pass that along to the city commission.
Is there a motion?
Step down for this one, like I did.
Page three there, number two, that's.
I would make the motion on, on case Z12-1, that we modify it with staff, the verbiage that's been talked about, for commercial signs on where there's, where's to be pole signs. I don't know how to word it.
And then, no limitation on commercial business messages?
But to shut off at 10 o'clock, as we worded it.
I'd second that.
Is there, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. Ken can come back. Our next item under administrative items is a review of the previous discussions of outdoor archery and commercial paintball ranges.
Mike's, though, might be the only one that remembers this.
Well, you know, when I read that, I was thinking, God, do I, do I remember that? I, boy, it's way back there, but it's.
Quite some time ago, which would be actually in the fall of 2007, staff was approached by St. John's Military School about adding a, a ability to have a paintball facility. And they were, basically, the ordinance allows athletic fields and other outdoor recreation facilities accessory to schools. If the school's a conditional use, we had a conditional use for the athletic field across the street from St. John's Military on Euclid, because it's not zoned university or wasn't part of their original campus. And then, subsequent to that, north of the levee, they were looking at establishing a paintball range for cadets. And we had public hearings on that. There's quite a bit of discussion and education about how paintball worked, safety procedures, how they were going to ensure that the paintball guns were only used on their course and not other places, and that they had quite a detailed plan for that. The planning commission approved that, but it was contingent on the city commission approving an amendment to the city code that actually allowed, if I remember correctly, I recall an application, conditional use permit application filed by Mr. Welsh to put a paintball, indoor paintball area over on, in a warehouse on Fourth Street, which is permissible, 'cause it's inside a building. What the city code doesn't allow is discharge of paintball guns, slingshots, BB guns, those types of things outdoors. So, we were working on getting the city commission to amend that portion of the ordinance. We were focusing on the land use part. That kind of bogged down, and it's been reactivated, and I'm involved on a staff team that's, that's working on that. But one thing that city commissioner, or city and planning commissioners asked is, well, we've got the, the St. John's Military, what if somebody wanted to, that was not a school, wanted to, had a suitable piece of property, and they wanted to establish a commercial paintball range inside the city limits? Should we make provision for that? So, we came back with a text amendment that allowed for somebody to have a, a private piece of property where they could, if they wished, and it was zoned agricultural, that they could have a commercial paintball range outdoors on, in the open air. And the planning commission worked through that issue, and what you have basically is page three and four in your report, was the amendment that the planning commission came up with, which provided a roadmap for somebody who wanted to have a commercial paintball facility inside the city limits. The other thing that we found interesting was that we had a provision that allowed for gun clubs and trap shooting ranges to be applied for as a conditional use, but the chief of police pointed out that it was illegal to discharge firearms within the city limits. So, the idea that we would have a gun club or trap shooting range in the city wasn't gonna work, so the amendment also deleted those items. But what you see there on page three and four was what the planning commission came up with, and that was sufficiently long ago that we wanted to bring it back and see if, if we were working on the, this criminal code part to legalize the discharge of paintball guns and allowing for archery instruction and things in city parks and the Y and schools, that this planning commission still felt the same way about having a roadmap to have commercial paintball facilities. And I attached the minutes of the previous planning commission discussion on this item, just so you could see that. But what you have on page three and four there was basically the amendment that the planning commission came up with. It never went to the city commission, because it was gonna go jointly with the section on the criminal code that was gonna legalize the discharge of paintball outdoors inside the city limits. So, this is just brought back to you for way of background and to see if, after reviewing this, this commission is still supportive of allowing somebody to apply to have a commercial paintball range outdoors inside the city limits.
Any comments or questions? And there would be something besides this proposed amendment of January 15, 2008, that would get finalized. I mean, there's a lot acreage of 10 acres and some of those things.
Well, what the planning commission said is they liked everything about that amendment, except they thought that the planning commission ought to be the judge of whether you had enough acreage or not, and that there shouldn't be a minimum size. So that, as opposed to, it's, it's pretty tough to find, I mean, there's, you get close to the levee and on the edges, you could find a 10-acre piece, but the planning commission and the recommendation said they liked everything about that amendment, except they didn't like the 10-acre minimum. They wanted that eliminated, and that the planning commission could decide whether an applicant had enough land area.
Well, since you brought it up, I can share with you my experience. You put a paintball gun in a kid's hand, and they're gonna shoot it whether they're walking outside to their car or not. I mean, we had, this has been some time ago, but when we had the indoor facility on, maybe Fourth Street.
Mm-hmm.
The kids come and going who were bringing their own paintball markers would still shoot Medina's building across the street and every car up and down. I mean, you just, you just couldn't control it. So my concern, I think with St. John's, if they, I mean, where their, if I've seen where their facility is, if they were requesting something like that, I could still see it being a conditional use permit, meaning that the markers are gonna be checked out to their kids, and anything that they hit around their area is most likely their own school. And if they've gotta put up with that, then they could do that. But I agree, when I saw the 10 acres, I'm sitting there going, where would you find 10 acres, even in the city of Salina, that you could possibly do that? And then to raise nets that high, I mean, 20 feet in the air, you'd have to think of, how tall are the nets out at the golf course? I mean, maybe have a guess there?
That, that high or a little bit higher.
I mean, 20 feet to do that, and then what do you have to do? Those net, can you imagine those nets around 10 acres of property? I mean, I just don't even think what we're asking to do is even feasible to, to put that in there for some, I mean, the, the parameters don't match. If somebody even were to put one together to find 10 acres, then put a 20-foot fence all the way around it, it just doesn't, doesn't even.
So, the, the draft that was put together, which is at the very end there, that was put together for the city commission, had no minimum acreage, and would just be up, up to your judgment whether, whether the applicant had a plan. But the two options are to say, no, we, we don't even wanna make provision for some, well, what happened is somebody would say, well, we see what St. John's is doing, and we wanna do something similar, but we want it to be a commercial venture, and this, our answer would be no, or if, if this amendment gets passed, then this would establish the ground rules for how somebody could establish and operate a commercial paintball operation. And a lot of these provisions in here were based on the conditions that the planning commission put on St. John's operation. And I said, they, St. John's, they brought, they brought in their internal procedures manual, basically, and presented it to the planning commission, and the planning commission incorporated that into the conditional use permit.
And again, my experience is, I, I don't believe it even should be allowed in the outside. I've been to many paintball facilities, and typically, the owners of that put old cars, crates, barrels, camouflage, netting. I mean, I just can't even think of anywhere in the city of Salina that you would want to drive by and see, basically, all of that stuff sitting out in a 10-acre field, when, when it's permissible in the county with a conditional use permit. Is that correct?
Yes. So, yeah, the, the, this was generated by the idea that, that planning commissioners said, well, now that we've said it, it's, it's okay for St. John's Military School to do this, should we make provision for somebody to do it as a, as a commercial? And it's not, it's, again, getting back to the level playing field or equal playing field. It's, it's either a good idea or not a good idea. I agree. It's hard to imagine anybody coming up with a location inside the city limits that meets a lot of this criteria or would be suitable. But this was done with the idea of planning commissioners saying that, well, if it's good enough for St. John's Military School, what do we say to somebody else who thinks they wanna try to do it, but on a commercial basis?
Does St. John's have 10 acres?
I have to double-check what their, their field was. They got some property back from the city. I will double-check that here.
There's some conversation in a minute.
They have 9.89 acres.
So I'm not really clear. St. John's, they do have permission, conditional use to do that now. They're doing it now. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
They have a conditional use permit to set up the course, but they can't, it's not, still not legal to discharge paintball guns inside the city limits, except inside a building. So, we're, we're working with the police department and city attorney to come up with ordinance language that would allow for the discharge within the city limits. But the question is, are we gonna limit it just to instructional things or, or done through schools and the YMCA, or do we wanna allow for it as a private, commercial paintball range? And since that falls under the zoning and was discussed with you, that's, we're bringing it back. The commission felt like they needed to allow for that when it was discussed in, in 2007, 2008. It never went to the city commission to actually change the ordinance, so before we started back in that direction again, we just wanted to run this by this commission and see how you felt about opening that door for a commercial outdoor paintball range within the city limits.
How many outdoor paintball ranges in the county have survived that they've opened up and are still running today? I mean, are there some that, I know there's been a lot by gypsum?
I know there's been some that have come and gone. I know there's.
So, so it's kind of a mute point. I mean, I don't see any reason why we should even allow them to do it in the city. If they can't even make it in the county, why would, why would we even wanna worry about them opening one up in the city? I think it's just a, the county's a good place for it. We gotta leave it there.
And changing the ordinance to allow the discharge of those in the city is gonna become a little confusing to young people, 'cause.
Yeah.
Paintballs are kinda notorious for being carried around in a car and shoot, shoot everything in the park that's sitting there, or frankly, up and down the street in the evening. I just, I just think, I'm not entirely in support of this at all.
As I said, since the change has never actually been made, but rather than picking that up and, and carrying it on, that's why I brought it back to this commission, 'cause if, if you don't think it's worthwhile to even go there, then you just simply would leave the ordinance the way it is.
I don't like them either, and I've never shot a gun in my life. I could care less about them. But as a fairness issue, I think if they can comply with the conditions, they ought to be, I mean, they're pretty onerous. I would be allowed to have a chance to make their case work.
This only applies to areas in the city that, my thought, the only places that really meet this criteria are like at the far end of East Cloud, up against the levee. We have A1 zone, a lot of that property over there is zoned A1 and is, is pretty much a lot of open space. That, that's, we have property up against the levee in different locations. But this only allows it in the agricultural district, so this amendment doesn't allow somebody to take a commercial piece of property or something and do it. It only says, if you have property that's zoned agricultural, and you wanna do this on a commercial basis, you can apply to the planning commission, and here's the ground rules you have to meet. So, if you don't think it's a good idea within the city limits anywhere, except for something instructional, which the. instructional, which the, the selling point for St. John's Military is that it was an instructional program in addition to being recreational. If it's, if it's not a good idea on a commercial basis, then you simply would say, we don't want to proceed with this amendment.
Could you do it where, that would allow them, I mean, could it be that there, it's not a money-making venture, that somebody can apply for a conditional use permit? And if they have the proper location that's screened, I mean, I know where St. John's field is or that they have set up and it's their property, they have 9.9 acres, it is heavily screened. So right now, they have their field set up, but they cannot discharge a gun, is that correct?
That is correct. Because the city ordinance still has not been changed to allow the discharge of, of paintball guns outside in the city limits.
Has St. John's came in and tried to apply to, to change that ruling in the city limits?
Yeah, but it's been, it's been on, it's been ongoing. There were some certain things, and then you start, when you start looking at other instructional things like BB guns and are they okay under supervised conditions? And it just depends on, that is, that's basically in the city's criminal code, and this is simply a, a land use question. So I don't, I don't see, and Mr. Kennedy would know whether, I don't see USD 305 getting in the business of paintball gun instructional programs or anything where you're going to be looking to do that at South High or Central High or their middle schools, but that, that avenue would still be open. This simply deals with somebody who wants to do a paintball range, and it, it could be not-for-profit or it could be for-profit, but this just says, if you're not a school and you don't have an instructional program, and you think you'd like to open an outdoor paintball range for recreational or for-profit purposes, and you have an agricultural zone, piece of ground in the city, here's the ground rules.
Dean, let me, so I'm clear now, I'm not real clear yet. St. John's has approval, conditional approval, to have a course.
Yes.
But they can't use it because they don't, they're not compliant with the city ordinance.
They can't use it because they're inside the city limits and you can't discharge a paintball gun inside the city limits.
Let me add to my question then. Under the conditional use to have a paintball course, can there be an exception made to the city ordinance only for that particular course? I mean, could it be tied that way so that as these come before the, the planning commission, and they have legitimacy and they're approved, then at the same time, you're getting an exception to the ordinance not allowing you to discharge inside of that course?
Are you saying that you limit it only to, to schools or entities that, like schools and YMCA's that want to do it for instructional and recreational purposes, but not for commercial purposes?
Well, let me give you an example. Suppose the Y because they have 10 acres, let's assume they have 10 acres over there. And the Y wanted to set up a course and put up their nets, and they wanted to get a conditional permit to do that. They got the conditional permit. Could also be tied to that, a condition to discharge a paintball inside of that course be part of that conditional use. We don't have change all whole city ordinance in and address all those issues with BB guns and bows and arrows and all that. Could it just be tied individually to approval of that course? In other words, the ordinance could state simply that discharge of paintball guns is not allowed except in approved courses in A1.
So then you're talking about another text amendment to 25111.
We could do that and just simply leave the zoning ordinance out of it and just address it strictly with section 25. And the, the reason that this even came up was after this had all been worked through, the planning commissioners asked if somebody wanted to, now we have this, somebody else comes forward and they wants, wants to do it. This, this was done because it was, the school itself was a conditional use and it was considered to be part of the recreational field and programs for the school. If, if the school wasn't there, if it wasn't sponsored by the school or part of the school's program, and Joe Q. Public wanted to open a paintball range where St. John's did, there 's no mechanism for approving it. We just say, sorry, it's not permitted anywhere in the city. End of story. So.
Well, they have the same mechanism that St. John's had, and that is to bring forward a conditional use request.
Yeah.
I mean, in that regard, am I missing a point or being naive?
That's what my thinking was.
I, I mean, I understand the issue of fairness, but St. John's had a detailed plan, a detailed purpose that had some logic, or it wouldn't have been, I don't think it would have been approved. The general public has that same avenue open to them. I have a 12-acre lot up against the dyke, and I want to do this and for these reasons, and they can bring that to this board at any time and request a conditional use.
No, they can't. They couldn't do that unless you recommend that this text amendment that's in your packet be approved, which, which sets it up. The, the reason that St. John's was able to do that was that they are a school. And if you are a school and you want to add recreational facilities for your school, and you're doing it outside what your original campus was, then you have to get a conditional use permit to add recreational facilities for your school. But if some private landowner said, I want to put a paintball range in that same property, and it's open to the public, and I'm going to own it and operate it privately, there's no mechanism, because they're not a school, there, there's nothing that you can attach that to, it's just a freestanding, commercial paintball range. So what the planning commission was trying to do back then is says, well, this was allowed because it's operated by a school and it's accessory to a school, but if it was just some private landowner who wanted to do it, what would be the mechanism to do it? And we said, well, that would take a text amendment, and here's a possible text amendment that would set out that process.
Have there been any requests for it?
There have been no requests for it.
And then the, a private citizen would have the option, and if they decided that was an avenue they wanted to pursue, they could go to the commission and ask for this to be revisited, couldn't they?
That is correct.
And that would be their avenue to get a change made.
Yes.
And then we could revisit all this.
This application and the amendment that you see there was initiated by a previous planning commission. It wasn't initiated by any landowner. They said, well, if it's good enough for St. John's, should it be good enough for a private landowner to be initiate that?
Seems to me like we're doing a lot of work for something that seems to have no interest, except that.
I agree, nobody's beating our door down to do this. The other thing, I had a question. I like Commissioner Kennedy's idea of making an amendment to that conditional use permit to allow them to discharge the guns, but does this board have the authority to do that? To change a criminal code?
No, that's only done by the city commission. All, the reason this is here is that is going to go back to the city commission. The question was, is it going to be a companion item to amend the criminal code and to amend the zoning code to set up this process for commercial paintball ranges? Those would be considered at the same time. If you don't have any interest in amending the zoning code to allow the ability to have a commercial paintball range, then all they're going to consider at the city commission level is chapter 25 and whether it should be legal to discharge paintball guns. And what we'll do is we'll basically issue permits to St. John's Military School to have a instructional paintball range, that it's under the supervision of a school, and it wouldn't open it up for a commercial.
I am good with that, because let's not deal with all this until there's an interest. I don't know that there's going to be a lot of interest, and if there is, at that time, they can bring, as someone said, they can bring their plan forward and they can start at the city commission.
I agree. That's essentially what was done with tattoo parlors. So what I'm hearing is that this, this commission is not interested in, in having that go on to the city commission, and the code should be left just the way it is. And that, that's the way we will leave it.
I doubt it.
Until they price a 20-foot net around about six acres.
Drop it after they're done at 10-foot, that's going to.
John, do they, do they have a letter at their place up there? Okay.
Are there other matters?
Other matters you have at your place up there, a letter that was sent out to the pawn shop across the street, despite the clear outline of, of conditions when the conditional use permit was considered and approved. You have the photo, the, this appeared. Two things, one, sign permit was not issued for that sign, it just appeared. And it is contrary, first of all, you can't put up a sign without a signed permit, and second of all, the planning commission stated that the existing signings that was on the wall was all that was to be allowed. So we have sent a letter asking that it be removed. They do have, if they wish, the ability to file a written request asking you to reconsider and change your mind about it. The other thing is, although I have a car that's identical to that, that is not my vehicle in the photograph, so.
Weren't they supposed to remove that, that pole?
The pole's actually supposed to be removed as well, then you don't have the temptation to put this sign up. So both the pole and the, the sign need to be removed. We just put it there because they do have the right to come before you and, and ask you to reconsider and, and change your mind with your original approval. But we are aware of that, and we have sent this correspondence, and we will continue working with them, and of course, we always have municipal court as the final arbiter of that. But the, we wanted to bring that to your attention because conceivably, they could ask to be put on your agenda and reappear and tell you why you were wrong to limit them in the first place. Related to that, and I think I've had some conversations, I've been disappointed to find, because we had conversations with the shop owners at our inspections, and we had discussions here, and what was kind of agreed to was that at the tattoo parlor over there on Iron, we were shown an area on the backside where employees and others were going to be directed if, if they needed to go outside and smoke. And I was coming back from lunch today and counted six people on the sidewalk in front of the, the shop entrance there, all of whom were sharing smokes, which was exactly what was described as, as being a concern about people standing around and loitering on the outside. So we were assured, two things, one by the landlord, who said if that became an issue, he would address it as a landlord-tenant issue. The other thing is the operators told us and showed us the area around on the backside, which was where they were going to ask employees and others to have their smoke breaks. So with your concurrence, we will send them a reminder message that what they had agreed to about that, and that they had agreed to designate an area on the backside that wasn't on the Iron sidewalk for that. I don't know what your observations have been, but that's, that's what I observed. I've observed that today, but there were actually six people out there at the time. So these are just two examples that, that you as commissioners and we as staff do the best we can on conditional uses to try to outline conditions and, and adhere to those, but it, it can be a challenge if, if the applicants aren't going along with that, so.
So what is the proper channel of, you send out a letter and they still don't comply? Can this commission remove the conditional use permit?
We can, we can schedule it back on your agenda and say, we have this, that it would be the same thing with the sign. Conceivably, if you have conditions of approval, they're subject to those conditions. If they don't wish to adhere to them, their choices are, A, to get them modified by you, or B, you can say, we approve this based on this. If you don't conform to that, then the conditional use permit can be revoked. And you would have what, basically, what we call a show cause hearing. It calls the applicant in and says, this is for you to show cause why we shouldn't revoke your conditional use permit. And then they, they can explain why they haven't been able to conform with it, but that is, that is the whole point of having the public hearing, that's the whole point of having conditions, and the conditions are enforceable. And I think the, the court action in the, the BFR metals case reconfirmed that conditions are binding and enforceable on an applicant, so, or a property owner. So we're, we're going to follow up with that course of action. The other items where we will meet on the 17th, and we have a case with changes in the nature and scale of the operations over at the hospice facility on Holly Lane by adding additional office space and additional uses over there. And then we have a, we indicated a plan for adding an attached building south of the Coles store out on South Ninth Street, but the plan for what would be attached is different than the plan that the planning commission previously approved, so it will come back. It's just the footprint and the, is, is different. It's still going to be an attached building at the south end, but it's going to be configured differently than, and have a different square footage than what was approved initially. So that, that will be on your agenda for the 17th. And then we have steady sessions scheduled before then to talk about what the Salina Bicycle Club bouncing some ideas off, working with the planning commission on, on making Salina more bicycle friendly, and we'll probably have some other staff members there for that. And then on Thursday and Friday, there were some planning sessions looking at making sustainable development possible in North Salina, and there were some things that came out of that, and we will share those with the planning commission. There were some planning consultants that were hired through an EPA grant, and they're going to be putting together some recommendations, and when those are put together, we'll bring them to you.
Carl, I have one thing, if I may, too.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, just quickly, this is, I, you had shared something with us in our packet some time back about Zona Rosa in Kansas City? And so this weekend, I went up to see it because I wanted to get a mental picture. And so I'm suggesting we get one of those here in Salina, in its entirety, and along with it, the 10,000 new homes surrounding it. Would that be okay?
Second that.
I think we'd probably have to have the homes first, and then we'd get Zona Rosa.
Well, let's build it and they will come, maybe, I don't know.
But the idea behind that is that Zona Rosa is not your typical mall-type shopping center, it's a different form and arrangement, and those are the type of things that we were talking about in the neighborhood center, community center type format is, that is intended to match what Zona Rosa is, which is.
It's very nice, and I'm not suggesting it replace our mall because I like our mall, but I, I'm suggesting we develop things that promote growth in our community, and as the city grows, those type of things we can, we can accommodate.
Yeah, it's, it's basically taking a lot of the uses and activities that are around Central Mall, but putting it in a different physical format than what is, is there.
I saw the sales tax dollars going in there, and I'm thinking, boy, there was a lot of business there the day we were there. Is hospice building on or just?
It is not adding the footprint. What they're doing is shrinking the portion of that hospice occupies. The other thing, the basement today is used for storage, and the plan is to put additional office space in the basement and then some additional parking north of the building. So there'll be a public hearing on that on the 17th, and we'll carry over this North Ninth. Ninth case where the applicant was not able to be present.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
It's removed.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stay here.
Paul stomping their feet and waving signs that read, "End the War," and...